The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Florida. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. Nineteen present.
A quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Rodrick Burton of New Northside Missionary Baptist Church.
Before I get started, we'd like to have a moment of silence to honor the passing of Robert Stanley Evans, who's the brother of the Board Clerk Donna Booker, and also for the passing of Maya Angelou, so we can have that moment at this time. Before I start this prayer, I just want to let the Board know, first, I want to thank President Reed for this opportunity to stand before this prestigious body. I want to let the Board know that the St. Louis Clergy Coalition has called for united prayer this week so that we have a safer summer. We will have an interfaith prayer service at Washington Tabernacle on Sunday at 5:00 PM, and we hope that you all would attend. Now, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for democracy, and Lord, we're thankful for this opportunity to exercise democracy. Lord, we're thankful for all who are gathering in this place. We pray that you endow them with wisdom, Lord, wisdom and justice and mercy. Dear Lord, we thank you that St. Louis is a hard-working city, and we thank you, Lord, for those hard-working members of the Department of Forestry who are here, hard-working members of this body, and, Lord, we pray that all of those who are working in St. Louis would be able to do so today with peace and with safety. Lord, we pray that you would economically bless the city of St. Louis. Lord, we would be careful to give you thanks for it, but more than anything, we pray that there would be a spirit of collaboration and cooperation today in this meeting. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
In honor of Maya Angelou, we have, she spent her first two years of her life on Hickory, which is in the Sixth Ward, so we have a poem that's going to be read by Alderman from the Sixth.
Good morning, Members of the Board. Thank you, President Reed. As Mr. Reed mentioned, Maya Angelou grew up on Hickory and Caroline Streets in the Sixth Ward and spent a very painful and tragic part of her childhood there, which she wrote about in "I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings." She was able to turn that pain into beauty, and I've always been really fascinated by her, so I just wanted to read a portion of "On the Pulse of Morning," which she wrote for President Bill Clinton and read at his inauguration. Lift up your faces. You have a piercing need for this bright morning dawning upon you. History, despite its wrenching pain, cannot be unlived, and if faced with courage, need not be lived again. Lift your eyes upon the day breaking for you. Give birth again to the dream. Women, children, men, take it into the palms of your hands. Mold it into the shape of your most private need. Sculpt it into the image of your most public self. Lift up your hearts. Each new hour holds new chances for new beginnings. Do not be wedded forever to fear yoked eternally to brutishness. The horizon leans forward, offering you space to place new steps of change. Here, on the pulse of this fine day, you may have the courage to look up and out upon me, the rock, the river, the tree, your country. No less to Midas than the mendicant. No less to you now than the mastodon then. Here, on the pulse of this new day, you may have the grace to look up and out and into your sister's eyes, into your brother's face, your country, and simply say, very simply, with the hope, "Good morning."
We'll suspend what our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second order motion, second about all in front of the 20th, Alderwoman from the Sixth.
Roz, do you want to come up? Any of your family and friends, we'd love to have them up here as well. I'm not sure if there are any more Chris Wells that are working in City Hall, but I think I did a resolution for your husband last year.
You did. Just some micro work.
Yeah, absolutely. Nice to see you. Yeah, you're good. You're good. Are you ready to go? Okay. All right, we are pausing in our deliberations this morning to recognize Rosalyn Criswell, who has been an employee here at the city since 1976. Her outgoing bubbly personality and ability to excite others propelled Roz to work with the United Way, the United Negro College Fund, and in 1991, due to her generous nature and big heart, she didn't stop there. She created a program to help struggling families during the holiday season with food to eat, clothes to wear, and presents for their children to unwrap. She worked and coordinated all the secretaries here at the Board on this project, which they all are still working on and think is very important. In 1997, her title changed from Personnel Assistant to Charity Program Coordinator, and she continued to host and create various events such as Books Are Fun and City Hall's Rotunda, and currently, Ms. Criswell works as the Human Resource Specialist and maintains her time with that Department of Personnel, have become some of the most enjoyable times of her life. Roz has been married to Donnell Criswell for 42 years, is also a retiree from the St. Louis Water Division, and their greatest love is for God, each other, their friends and family at Mount Zion Baptist Church, as well as all of God's people. We have been apprised that although a party is planned for May 16th, Roz will officially celebrate her last day as a city employee on May 30th, so let's all congratulate Roz on her retirement.
Any further discussion? I also want to offer my thanks for all your years of work and congratulations.
Thank you.
See, unfortunately, we don't have air conditioning. It's always a shock to people when they come, but I want to thank you for all your hard work and everything that you've done to make St. Louis a better place to live, work, and play. The works that you've done to raise money through the United Way, for the United Negro College Fund and everything, those things are significant, and it has changed lives of kids all across our city that have moved on to do great things all across this nation because of your work, and I cannot thank you enough. As a resident of the city, as a father of four, and as an elected official in the city, I cannot thank you enough for everything that you've done to make St. Louis a better place to live, work, and play. As you know, this resolution is the highest honor this Board has to give, and what it does is it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the city of St. Louis, they will find amongst those records the name Rosalyn Criswell, and they'll know that you've contributed so much so that today we pause in our deliberations to make sure that you were recognized, and they will be able to read about some of your contributions in turning our city around. So I'm so honored to be here today. I'm honored to have the opportunity to personally congratulate you and thank you for a job well done. Let's give Rosalyn another round of applause. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I also want to congratulate Rosalyn on her retirement. We worked together for 10 years over in Personnel along with some more former coworkers of mine. I like to say hello to you. Roz, you've done a great job with the city. I know you couldn't wait to retire once your husband retired. You didn't want him to have all the fun, but I just want to wish you your best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I think it's your turn, Ms. President. Come on.
Real short, very brief. I'd like to thank all of you all that I've worked with throughout the 38 years. I noticed on yesterday, the faces have changed. They're new, they're different. A lot of people that I started out with are no longer here with the city, so I wish all of you, especially the new people, a long, happy, enjoyable tenure with the city of St. Louis.
Let's give Roz one more round of applause. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Introduction of our guest. Any introduction? Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I would like to have Anthony Lancia from the AGC as my special guest this morning. I met with him and a couple of folks from the Construction Careers Academy in the Sixth Ward. They're doing some really great work over there, and I look forward to partnering with them more on recruiting young people to get a good, solid education from the 25th Ward. Speaking of that, I would also like to welcome Quinn Wilson, who's currently interning in the Mayor's Office. He is a current student at St. Mary's High School. I'd like to have him as my special guest this morning. Thank you.
Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Ms. Stephanie Robson of AmeriUe. Thank you.
Alderman from the 13th.
President, Members of the Board, I would like to introduce as my honored guest Jeff Haines from the Carpenters District, and he has two young men that are, help me, they're, yes, they're from, and they're from St. Mary's. They're Douglas Melgara and James Lovins, and they are going to be seniors at St. Mary's High School, and they're working as interns.
Excellent. Welcome back. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest, Jeff Haines from the Carpenters District, and he has two young men that are, help me, they're, yes, they're from, and they're from St. Mary's. They're Douglas Melgara and James Lovins, and they are going to be seniors at St. Mary's High School, and they're working as interns.
Excellent. Welcome back. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, Brian Sullivan and Mr. Ken Franklin from the Election Board, and also Ms. Gina Hackenworth with Le Cleve Gas. I'd also like to recognize our Forestry Commissioner, Greg Hayes, who is also a constituent of mine. Thank you.
Alderman from the 14th.
President, Members of the Board, I'd like to welcome as my special guest Senator Jamila Nishid. Of course, there's going to be other people that will recognize her, but I want to recognize her for what she has done in the Third Ward because she does run there.
Welcome, Senator. Alderman from the 14th.
I'd like to recognize Senator Jamila Nishid from the 5th Senatorial District, State of Missouri. She represents part of the 14th Ward. Also, I would like to have as my honored guest, Mr. Gary Otten from the Painters District Council.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 20th.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, once again, I received another sketchy email from a colleague of ours indicating, first of all, that on this date, I'm not sure where I wrote this down, but I do remember that on this date, someone was burned at the stake, and also that Hernando De Soto discovered Florida, and that is the birthplace for our Cardinals to have Cardinal baseball. I think Fred Stephens was down there with Hernando De Soto. Further, we have as our Congressman Representative today for Lacy Clay, Brian Williams.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to have as my esteemed guest this morning, Ms. Rachel Smith with the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour, that's actually on that side of the room today, and also Officer David Rudolph, and Commissioner Hayes, don't worry about us burning you at the stake, that's not going to happen, you know, so, we appreciate you and your crew being here. It's well deserved.
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Gina Hackenworth with Le Cleve.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? We also have our License Collector here. Thanks for coming, Madam License Collector. And her staff members. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. All those of you whose names have not been called, you are my special guests, because otherwise you would be up top. Thank you.
Also, let's give one more round of applause to our Forestry Department. Could you guys all stand up? They do some phenomenal work for us. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you so much for coming out today. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from the, I don't know which May 16th meeting.
It's moved by Alderman from the 17th, entertain a second order motion, second about Alderman from the 20th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with lying items, seven through 10, first reading Board Bill.
Board Bill 65, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission approving the name of a new public street to be located adjacent to the approved North Sarah Phase Two resubdivision located in City Block 4564. Board Bill Number 66, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia and Alderwoman Flowers, in ordinance pertaining to the adoption of a policy supporting the practice of the trapped, neutered return of feral cats containing an emergency clause that's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 65, and to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 66, that's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill Number Two, Committee Substitute, sponsored by President Reed, in ordinance establishing a bond oversight committee to help ensure efficiency, equality, timeliness, accountability in the expenditure of funds from any general obligation bonds issued in the city after the effective date of this ordinance. Board Bill Number 57, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance approving the petition of an owner of certain real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing the Sweetie Pie's Community Improvement District, and containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill Number 13, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3637 North Utah, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 15, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2841 through 47 Indiana, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 16, sponsored by Alderman Moore, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4409 through 25 Athens, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 17, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4218 Maryland, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 18, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5444 Odell, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 19, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2422 through 24 South 11th Street, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 22, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5135 Shaw, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 24, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4467 Gibson, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 26, sponsored by Alderman Villa, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 7200 through 7230 South Broadway. Board Bill Number 28, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1910 Virginia, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 29, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2655 Aclemack, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 30, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3670 Flora, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 31, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3663 Cleveland, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 32, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 55 through 57 Shaw, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 33, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3516 through 18 Wyoming, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 34, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3329 South 7th Street, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 35, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2724 Utah, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 40, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1212 through 14 Lynch, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 42, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4156 through 58 Juniata, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 43, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3548 Guyors, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 44, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 6201 through 05 Columbia, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 49, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2400 South 9th Street. Board Bill Number 50, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2010 Guyer, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 52, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 6335 Bullwood, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 53, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Lookaway Drive, Lookaway Court, redevelopment area, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
Dispense with lying item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill Number 14, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1900 Washington Avenue. Board Bill Number 21, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4936 through 38 Odell Street, containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 23, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance amending ordinance 69121 approved March 28, 2012 by clarifying the boundaries of the Bremen Homes. Board Bill Number 36, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3501 Utah, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 45, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in an ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2701 Delmar, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 46, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4929 through 63 Manchester, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Number 54, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2600 Samuel T. Shepherd Drive, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
We would, Alderman from the 17th? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion for perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, entertain a second order motion, second about Alderman from the 12th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. With dispens with lying item 16, third reading consent.
Board Bills 37, 41, Committee Substitute. That's the extent of third reading consent.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, second about Alderman from the 25th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Florida. Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the 17th in third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Dispense with lying item 18, report of enrollment.
Board Bills 37 and 41, Committee Substitute.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the 22nd, would you like to approach the diocese for Resolution Number
Commissioner Greg Hayes, would you approach? This is a, good morning. This is a resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers. Unfortunately, she's stuck in traffic, but I have co-sponsored the resolution with her to honor forestry and the great work that they do for the city of St. Louis. And it says, "Whereas on Monday, April 28, 2014, at around 4:00 PM, parts of Vaden and North Point neighborhoods were hit by a quick-moving, high-energy storm, and whereas several trees fell in the area and blocked roadways and produced large debris..." scattered throughout the neighborhood. And whereas the forestry department was contacted immediately and within 30 minutes, we're in the neighborhood assessing the damage, the crews began to assemble to clear the roadways. And whereas within one hour, the forestry crews had most of the roadways open for through traffic, continued to clear debris and assisting residents to free property from fallen tree limbs. And whereas crews continued to work late through the night to clear one last roadway and return promptly at 7:00 AM to finish the work so that roads were trouble-free and safe to drive. And whereas by Wednesday, April 30, 2014, the neighborhood didn't look at all like a storm had even passed through. And whereas the forestry department worked with the street department with crews to ensure debris was removed quickly and the street sweepers were finished up the job. And whereas today, the second ward would like to thank Greg Hayes and Sylvester Brandon for their immediate response and all the forestry workers on all shifts for coming out to aid with no delay. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause now deliberations to recognize the hard work and commitment of the St. Louis Forestry Department and we further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honorees at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor introduced on the 30th day of May by Alderwoman Dion Flowers. Let's give forestry a hand. Greg, I'd just like to say on behalf of...
Oh, before I speak, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd?
Yeah, I would like to thank Greg and the forestry department. I don't know how many times I picked the phone and said, hey, I need this done, and the compliments come back to me saying, hey, great job, Alderman, but I always try to pass it back along to Greg and the forestry department. These guys are fantastic. If this isn't in bank, I'd sure like to see it in bank.
Alderwoman from the first?
Mr. President, members of the board, April 28 must be a special day in the city of St. Louis. When I was on my vacation from the board, I guess in 2012, the Kingsway East and Kingsway West neighborhood was hit with a storm that basically shut us down. Kings Highway was closed down, Euclid, and several others. And because of my long-term relationship with forestry, I was able to contact Mr. Hayes and some others, and they came out on my birthday, April 29, 2012, and they worked all day long cleaning and making sure that we were able to get through on Kings Highway, Euclid, MAF at Northland. So I then wrote a letter, I wasn't on the board then, but wrote a letter just telling them how much I really appreciate forestry. And if you don't have to use them maybe as much, you don't know how important it is to get trees off of your streets, especially a major thoroughfare like Kings Highway, or when you can't get out in your home, in your home. And I want to say it particularly to Mr. Hayes, because he responds to me all the time. I'm always emailing him, calling on him and forestry, I actually ride up and down the streets. When I got back here, I was emailing him so much, he said, Alderwoman, you don't have to send me any more pictures last year, trying to get forestry to get caught up in the first ward. I really appreciate you all. I think that, what I would say is that we, I am pushing, and I want to be on the floor, I want you to have more money. Forestry needs to have more money, forestry needs to have more resources, forestry needs to start their work in April instead of May, and forestry needs to cut, not stop cutting in September, but November maybe. And that's something that I'm committed to try to work on and hope others will, because you have too short a season, people don't appreciate how much better the city is when you get up the trash, this dump, because you don't just get up trees, you get up when people do illegal dumping. I totally appreciate all of you, and I want to thank you for all the work you do, and I would like to be a co-sponsor, and I would second Alderman from the 23rd who says, who said that if it was going to be in, if it wasn't in bank, that he would like it. I also would move that we put this resolution in in bank.
I second.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the first, second by Alderman from the 22nd, that we make resolution number 50 in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change and prepare another copy in bank.
So noted.
Alderman from the 25th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would just like to express my deepest gratitude for all of the men and women who work in the forestry department. You all really work tirelessly and do a great job for, you know, the resources that you have. I know when I sat on Ways and Means that I also, you know, fought for additional allocations, because, you know, the thing about, you know, our city employees, so oftentimes we talk about public safety down here, and we're talking about police and firefighters, but, you know, the thing that I always try and communicate, you know, not only down here but within my neighborhoods, is that, you know, public safety is not just responding to those critical issues, you know, that are life-threatening, but helping to create an active safety environment in our neighborhoods. And certainly, you know, tree removal from the middle of a, you know, intersection, that's a huge deal, that's a public safety issue. You know, having streetlights, you know, cut, or trees cut so that streetlights can shine down and our streets are lit, that's a public safety issue. And, you know, while you guys may not report up through the public safety department, everything that you do relates back to that. And I just, I, from the bottom of my heart, have to thank you all for the work that you do to create our, our city, make it a more beautiful city, but also create an active safety environment in our city as well. So thank you very much for all of the work that you do.
All along from the 14th?
I also would like to recognize Mr. Hayes and his crew for keeping the 14th ward up and running. They're from planting to trimming to, you know, emergency service. He's very responsive and works very well and delivers a great quality of life. The trees and the plantings that the city provides are quality of life and make our city shine. Thank you.
Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a date in mind, and I don't know as much about trees as I probably should, but this was last year, and I'm going to call it an oak tree since I don't know what it was, but a very large oak tree on a wet windy day came about halfway out of the ground and was teetering at a 45-degree angle over a home in my neighborhood, and the oak tree was easily twice the size of the house. And a large crowd of neighbors came out and we were, we were watching this tree, sort of just waiting for it to slice this house in two. We actually tied a rope around the trunk of the tree, and we had neighbors holding the tree up, you know, and I was frantically calling around, and really pretty quickly a forestry crew got there, very, very quickly, they were up and running, took the, took the branches off the tree and took the tree down and really, you know, saved this home. And I know that I was very appreciative, the homeowners were very appreciative, and I think the, the crowd of people standing there, well, maybe a little disappointed that they didn't get to see a house crushed. We're, we're very appreciative that, that, that these folks were there to fix a problem in a dangerous situation. So, and we all know Commissioner Hayes really does an exemplary job when, when we have an issue. So on behalf of me and my constituents, thank you.
Alderman from the 25th?
Mr. President, members of the board, I don't have any dramatic stories such as those, mine is mostly by a thousand cuts. So we have many lots, as Mr. Hayes is aware of, and the crews, as the Chair of Public Health and Human Services, I have to tell you that your service is very, very important to all of us. As the mayor and others have talked about trying to get more people out there active and walking and so forth, walking past areas that have been cut as you cut them is much more enjoyable, obviously, and it gets people out there, they feel safer and better about walking in the neighborhood. I am a frequent flyer, as Mr. Hayes knows. I think it was Mr. Bass who once said I was his most frequent customer. And we, we do miss you when you're not there, it is, it is so helpful to see those areas that are very difficult to deal with. I will tell you that when developers come into an area, they look at the alleys, frequently you're involved in that along with refuges, and they look at the surrounding area to see if people are taking care of that. Many of the folks in the 20th ward do care and they are taking care of their properties, but there are some who have abandoned the city, and that's where you all have come in to fill that void, and it is so important that you do that, and I want to thank you for all of those efforts. Again, when you're not there, we miss you, when you are there, we very much appreciate it. Thank you.
All along from the 19th?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the board. For Greg Hayes and his crew, first of all, let me thank you when I first came in as an alderperson, and I had some wild crazy ideas, but your kindness and your guidance put me on the right track, and so I appreciate that from you. Anytime we call and there's an issue, it is taken care of immediately, and that's because you've got a crew that understands what service means, and they know from your leadership what is expected. And so I really appreciate what you do, and I haven't shared with you my next crazy idea, but I got a new one. So, so guys, be ready, I got a new one, but I think you'll appreciate it, because it will allow us to eliminate some of the cutting that we do every summer, and then we can take that money and hire more personnel and then clean up the whole city. So I got a great idea for you. But again, thank you, gentlemen, thank you very, very much.
Alderman from the 14th?
Mr. President, members of the board, I just want to thank Greg Hayes. I didn't know that other people worried him as much as I do. And I'd be calling, and he never has refused to take my call, and from what I'm hearing today, there are a lot of you that are calling too. And I just don't understand how he was able to take the calls from me as often as I do call and do the work that he's done in my ward. He's made a significant difference, and you've heard me talk about the Salisbury Strip ever since most of you have been down here. And what he's done along this Salisbury Strip is just phenomenal, and I just want to publicly thank you for what it all, what, what all you have done, because you've made a difference. These men here, I see them out there in the park, cutting grass and, and working in the, in the 3rd ward, for a minute I thought I was the only one getting any service. They're doing a lot for everybody else, and so I just appreciate you.
I thank. All along from the 16th?
I, I have to say something, because as the ice cream truck comes through the neighborhood and the children run out of their houses for their ice cream, that's what happens in the 16th ward when the forestry department comes down the street. All my residents come running out, get my tray, get my tray, please. So I have to tell you all, thank you for the demands that are on you from the 16th ward every time your truck stops in our ward. But I also want to thank Greg, because I say the saying every time that you taught me, every time I watch the news and I hear the weather says, "High winds," I tell my residents, this is your warning, high winds is Mother Nature's tree trimming. Thank you all very much for all you do.
Alderman from the 11th?
Thank you, Mr. President, good morning. I, I'm going to be redundant and brief. I think the city of St. Louis is blessed with the magnificent tree system, and the ladies and gentlemen that I'm standing here looking at make us look good, and that's important to us, and I mean that sincerely. And it, again, being redundant, Greg Hayes is one of those guys that gets back to you right away, and that also is extremely important, because our phone calls keep coming, and you are the ladies and gentlemen that, that make it all work, and we are indeed grateful and thanks for coming down to see us. Keep up the good work.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 26th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd also like to thank Greg and the men and women of forestry, you guys do a heck of a job. You know, you really get us out of a lot of trouble. Anytime we call you, you're there for us, and we try to explain to a lot of our constituents, you're on a rotation schedule, and they really don't understand that, but you do a great job. Anytime I call you, you're there, we really appreciate it, especially the shoe stream budget that you're working off of. And I just want to kind of be a mirror of what the Alderwoman of the 1st ward said, you know, I think you need more money, and you do a great job with the income that you do have, so you don't go appreciate it in 26th ward. We appreciate you, thank you.
Alderman from the 9th?
President, members of the board, as the Alderman from the 23rd said when he made a statement about the calls that Commissioner Hayes gets, if you take 28 Aldermen, the President's office, the mayor's office, and I have no idea how many other, you know, ring your phone, send you the emails, if you get one a day, that's a lot, and I'd imagine that there's some that do several a day. So the guys that are standing behind Greg have no idea what he has to put up with, with all of us, you know, but yous do the job, and there's only a small handful here, but even Janice, you know, when the big boy's gone, you know, has big shoes to fill, and she does a good job too, all of yous do a good job. It's a job that I would hate to have, although I like cutting grass. But I kind of felt like if I didn't get up and say thanks, then Greg wouldn't take my call, so, you know, the 9th ward might have hindered a little bit, but we all really appreciate you, and I, I bet you had no idea that you're going to be stuck up there in this heat as long as you are. So, thanks again.
Alderwoman from the 28th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Greg, to you and to all of your team, thank you for always doing a good job. I'll always try not to be a pest, but you touch the lives of our residents and you make them better, so thank you so much for doing a great job.
Alderman from the 12th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Greg, I also want to thank you, you do a great job as our commissioner, you field a lot of phone calls and do get us out of a lot of trouble with our constituents, and that goes upon you having a great crew working with you. I really do appreciate all the work the workers do, we can give all the accolades to the bosses, but you do all the work, the bosses get it generated, so everybody makes everyone look good. So I do appreciate being a farmer-city worker, the recognition that women and men do throughout the city of St. Louis. Thank you.
All the women from the 13th?
Yes, thank you, President, members of the board. I too would like to thank you all for all your hard work. I haven't called your boss yet for anything, because I'm brand new, but I'm sure I will. But I, it's good to see all you people, now I know why the 13th ward is so beautiful. Thank you.
Alderman from the 21st?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join the chorus in praise for the forestry department, especially Greg. You know, it's very few departments that, when you call, something gets done within the hour, and that's happened several times, so I appreciate what you guys do, and to the workers especially, you guys have a tough job. It gets hot out there, but you guys get the job done, and I appreciate what you all do, making our neighborhoods look good. You guys many times are, are kind of making up for other people. You know, you're, you're in the alleys when other departments maybe should have done that, you're cleaning up people's yards when they should have done it, and so we appreciate you guys, you guys are the cleanup crew, you, you make our city look good, so we appreciate you. Thank you.
All the one from the 7th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. After what Kenny said, I suppose I have to stand up to make sure that Greg's going to take my calls. But I'll echo what everybody else has said. I see your guys out in the field, I saw a big orange truck go down 9th Street this morning, I knew we had mulch in the bins at 9th and Barton, you guys are on top of everything, in my opinion, and you are great servants for the city of St. Louis, just as we're called servants, you are too, sorry. But I still haven't figured out why you planted a crab apple tree in my honor.
Alderman from the 8th?
Great, thank you, and, you know, he's, his job is kind of like ours, a little bit of a social worker, and the one thing he does for me is, he says, I'll call your constituent for you and get it worked out with him, which sometimes in the 8th ward is a very complex and difficult task, because the residents are very demanding, and I've never had a complaint, but your crew and you have done a magnificent job, obviously for the 8th ward, because I haven't called you in six months, obviously for the 8th ward, and then listening to my colleagues, a very, very good job for that. And then I would just remind my colleagues that when we do the budget and you tell me you get no services from the city department, remember what you said about Greg today. Thank you.
Alderman from the 17th?
I don't like to usually say this, but I too am afraid if I don't say something. I, I used to be chairman of the Parks Committee, and now that the Alderwoman from the 28th is chairman, I'm not sure how much pool I'll have when I call up out there, so I have to cover myself. I have to cover myself but I've been down here for twenty-six years and and the parks department has always consistently been one of the one areas that we can always count on for making us look good when when something's overgrown or a tree branch is down or something so Greg thanks so much and and you know you guys really make us look good thank you.
All the ones from the 6th.
Thank you Mr. President members of the board I'm going to echo all of my colleagues' comments and also just note that you handled a situation in the 6th ward that needed a lot of tenderness which is not probably something you're used to doing with a hoarder last summer and you were back again this year and he it was a heartbreaking situation and the crews out there handled it well and you guys do an amazing job thank you so much for everything you do.
Any further discussion any further discussion I know I know you do but the alderman from the 2nd does also. Commissioner Hayes I also want to thank you for a job well done you know I tell you what I I can tell what type of a leader you are based on what has happened here today if you think about what just happened and I don't know if you know this but this is a rare occurrence when every alderman on this floor stood up and made a comment it's like hitting a hole in one you know how difficult that is if you're a golfer but also the fact that you didn't show up here by yourself today you showed up here and you brought your team with you you didn't just accept the accept this recognition by yourself you understood that it would it takes a strong team and you brought your team here with you and I cannot commend your team enough because when I see them out on the streets they're handling let me let me put it the way my sixteen-year-old son would say they're handling the business they're getting down to business they come in and they're professional and they do a phenomenal job and my twelve-year-old would say we have ninety-nine problems but forestry ain't one so congratulations congratulations on a job well done all right thank you.
I just wanted to give some personal comments before the alderwoman wraps it up Greg Hayes was one of the first commissioners or directors I was able to build a relationship with when I came down here in two thousand and three and he's been very instrumental in helping me navigate through what I need to do what they can do what they cannot do and what I really appreciate about Greg is he takes a personal interest in getting the job done as one alderman said he will call alderman Conroy he will call a constituent he will email a constituent he will go out there on site and that is something I greatly appreciate and you know Greg you just do a phenomenal job and the gentlemen and ladies behind you you know you guys do an awesome job it's a hundred plus degrees oftentimes this summer in the past summers and be safe out there you know my heart's out there with you when it's happening and anything we can do I can do in the 22nd ward to make your life a little easier if you need me to bring some water to you just give us a call you know because I see you sweating out there you guys do an awesome job and I greatly appreciate it and I know you don't hear it enough but I'm glad that the alderwoman brought you down here today so that you can see that we do greatly appreciate the hard work that you give to the city it's not unnoticed it's very noticed and again thank you so much for the hard work that you do for our city.
Also want to thank the alderman from the 22nd for he did a phenomenal job reading that resolution and let's give him a round of applause because he did a phenomenal job. All the ones from the 2nd.
Yes thank you Mr. President members of the board I thank you for delaying this for me there was an unfortunate accident on highway so I was caught in that so thank you alderman from the 22nd ward I I wanted to bring recognition to the forestry division for what they did on the 28th but honestly there are things that they do for us every day all through the year I don't know about you but every time I call Greg Greg says oh alderwoman you don't ask me for much so of course I'd be happy to do it so I don't know I think I ask you all the time for incredible over the top I'm in desperate need at times but I do use the citizen service bureau to do my complaints but when I need you you're there you're like the special forces of the city of St. Louis when the parks department needs something which I just found out in the Hall's Ferry Circle they call on you guys to take the trees down when we call refuse for trash or a whole house been dumped in an alley they call you guys because you have the equipment you have the strength so you're the backup you're the cleanup you do it all so I just wanted to thank you for taking my cellphone calls and I wanted to thank the crew that was out there tires tirelessly that day I called Greg and I called the mayor's office and he was down on the ground on Riverview assessing the situation made a call that no alderwoman we need to stay here longer we need to bring in those back those back holes and pick the stuff up and clear this out and honestly by the thirtieth you didn't know that what happened occurred couple of days later not only that they were in my ward for two weeks after that I mean you all were cutting trees and Riverview all over the neighborhood so I just wanted to I was impressed and I know when storms happen that's what they do but I was just impressed by the quickness the swiftness and the response and how they really got out there and did what they did so thank you Greg thank you Sylvester thank all of you because I know you probably get tired of us of some of the things we asked you to do and those vacant lots that have those weeds that grow into trees sometimes they're not even chartered by humans and you're in there looking at things that probably we don't want to see so I just wanted to thank you and recognize you always text you and tell you and but I wanted to do something different so thank you.
Oh no you you you're gonna talk Alderman from the 22nd we're gonna need you back up here I know you were gonna I'm gonna give the resolution to the alderman from the 2nd and alderman from the 22nd to present to Mr. Hayes.
So I do have a frame for this and so it will be properly given to you I just didn't get here in time to frame it so on behalf of the 2nd ward and apparently the city of St. Louis all of us do appreciate what you do and we just wanted to give this to you to show our recognition our thank you and this will be always in our archives that even though what you do as a department is something that we take for granted we really wanted to point you out today especially on the budget committee we want to make sure they get what they need and just thank you very much for what you do daily so thank you.
Well I can I'll be very brief I just want to let everybody know that we as a division are humbled and we're grateful for all the comments that have been made today we take great pride in the services we perform and I always tell our folks let's do the best job we can and that's all you can do so if you're doing the best job you can and people can see you out on all the city streets of all twenty-eight wards then then we're doing a good thing another thing we talk about in forestry is we can't control the weather but we can control the response services we provide post-weather events and that's what we try to do we took great pride also all these folks behind me we took great pride in speaking to the constituents of the 2nd ward on Riverview with the destruction that came quick and it came hard and there were some massive trees private and city that were blocking the right of ways so we took great pride in talking to them to allay their concerns to let them know their property damage would be rectified and their trees would be rectified as well because you just can't control it finally to the board alderwoman Flowers President Reed Alderman Boyd thank you so much we'll keep doing the best job we can and it's kind of comical the comments were so kind that I consider these folks a very motivated group but I can't imagine how motivated they're gonna be when they walk out of this room today they are going to be ecstatic for many weeks and months and hopefully years so we are gratified to be here and thank you.
The Spenceman line item twenty-one and twenty-two Miss Lanis unfinished business.
Mr. President and to the Board of Aldermen and the staff I just personally wanted to thank you very very much for your cards your offers of condolences your gift that was sent to me and my family and I also want to especially thank alderwoman Davis who drove all the way to Festus Missouri and spoke on behalf of herself in the nineteenth ward and on behalf of the Board of Aldermen my family really appreciates everything you all have said and done for us and to the staff thank you so very much on behalf of my family thank you.
On Thursday Public Safety Committee meeting ten AM in the leisure room also on Thursday eleven AM in the Kennedy Room a Streets Traffic and Refuge Committee meeting on Friday full board meeting ten AM in the chambers that's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements any further announcements? Any further announcements Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you Mr. President I'd like to announce that the forty-four hundred block of Holly in the O'Fallon neighborhood will be having a block yard sale it's a great event they'll have food and it's a great opportunity for people to come and see the beautiful O'Fallon neighborhood and there's also an event in Fairground Park in the 3rd ward organizations from the 21st ward the North Newstead Association and the Dream Center are organizing a cleanup in and around the park so that's another opportunity for people to come and see the wonderful neighborhood and O'Fallon thank you.
All the ones from the 19th.
Mr. President members of the board I'd like to ask you to join me in a special recognition I'm not sure if we did anything formally or not but I wanted to identify an accomplishment our clerk the Reverend Doctor Donna Evans Booker most of you may know but may not have had a chance to have a conversation with her but she has earned her degree in ministry she is well prepared to preach now I had an opportunity to hear her preach yesterday you are prepared I wanted to say congratulations to you and I wish you the best I I noticed that you when you were going to school and how hard you were studying and all that but I could see the fruit of your labor and I just wanted to formally congratulate you and I hope that we all could give her a really nice hand and congratulations on your accomplishment.
All the ones from the 19th thanks for that recognition for for our clerk I know when we come in in the morning I always say how you feeling Rev it took her a minute to get used to it but she is and she deserves it so let's give her a due thank you Reverend. Alderman from the 20th.
I think that we have prepared her because we don't pay any attention while she's reading all those things up there so that when she's preaching she should be aware of that by the way you can feel this heat and it's from Saint Joan of Arc who was burned at the stake in fourteen thirty-one.
Okay thank you any further announcements any further announcements further announcements Alderman from the 17th you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes Mr. President I move that we excuse the alderpersons from the 5th 10th and 15th ward.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 17th and entertain a second on that motion second by the alderman from the 21st any discussion all in favor signify by saying aye opposed motion carries Alderman from the 17th you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes Mr. President I move that we adjourn until next Friday June 6th.
Moved by the alderman from the 17th and entertain a second on that motion second by the alderman from the 22nd all in favor signify by saying aye opposed we stand adjourned.